Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the October 28th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead, Maury.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Public comment. Anybody inside the council like to step up? For public comment, you have five minutes. State your name and address. Okay, anybody online, Devin?
Not seeing any hands raised at this moment, but we'll give everyone another.
One second. Anybody out there on the Zoom link like to give a public comment? Please raise your hand. Going once, going twice, and we'll close public comment. We'll go over to item D.
Make a motion for a presentation from the Retirement Board.
Second.
Motion's second, Joe. Do you want to drive, Devin?
Thank you. Sure. On behalf of the Retirement Board, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to make this presentation today. The Retirement Board, I think we have one member here today, Bruce Polsky, and also Dave is our Town Council rep, and he's also Chair of the Board. It's been about 15 years since the last time that the Retirement Board actually came to the council. At that time, I don't think anybody was on the council, but at that time, the Board was going through, or the pension plan was going through a major change. The Retirement Board was making major changes. We were in a bundled process at that time, and the Board decided to unbundle. Bundled meaning, everything at that time was run by, and actually for the 30 years prior to that time, was run by an insurance company. And at that time, we unbundled, and we actually hired independent consultants to do various work on the pension plan for the Board and for the town. And so we moved away from that approach, and we hired the independent consultants. And this, we always refer to the Employee Pension Plan as the plan, so I'm going to refer to it as that. And actually, the plan is made up of five plans. Although it's one single plan, there's five subgroups in the plan, and they've got them listed there. The police have a plan, the fire have a plan, town employees, Board of Ed, non-certified employees. So anybody who's not a teacher or an administrator, secretaries, custodians, paraprofessionals. And then the library also has a plan, but they're all codified into town ordinances. And each plan, each of those subplans has specific requirements for that group. So if you're a town hall employee, there's certain things, criteria you have to meet to collect the pension. Your pension's determined in a certain manner. If you're a firefighter in the union, you'll get different requirements, basically credited service changes or benefit changes. So there's actually five different subplans within the one plan. But for town purposes and for accounting purposes, financial reporting purposes, we treat it all as one single employer plan. The plan is what we call the defined benefit plan. It's kind of like a dinosaur. There's not too many defined benefit plans left these days. The difference, or the important part about a defined benefit plan is it guarantees the participant an actual benefit based on certain criteria that the employee would have to meet. It's basically an exchange. It's like a promise. If you work for us for a certain number of years, if you earn a certain amount of money, you'll get a guaranteed benefit for the rest of your life when you decide to retire. So benefits are usually based on, the formula's usually based on credited service, which is the service you have while you're in the plan. You could actually be an employee and not get credited service if you're not participating in the plan. Although it's mandatory to participate, there's, at certain times, you may fall out of the plan. You don't meet certain criteria. So it's your actual time that you actually participate in the plan itself. That's what earns you your credited service. Your final average earnings, that's a definition. It's different for different groups, as I just mentioned. It basically, for most people, it's your last 36 months of earnings. It's not necessarily your highest 36 months of earnings. It's your last 36 months of earnings. For some other groups, it is your highest consecutive earnings for a certain period of time. And then the formula has a multiplier, which again is different for different plans. The plan is a contributory plan, and what that means is both the town and the employees do make contributions to the plan. The contributions range from 6% to 8%. 6%, most of the town staff, the town employees contribute 6%. Most of the public safety employees contribute between 7% and 8%. The firefighters contribute the most at the 8% level. Contributions for most employees stop at 32 and a half years. So if you're here 32 and a half years, once you reach the 32 and a half, you no longer have to contribute to the plan because you no longer gain credited service in the plan. The plan maxes your benefit out at 65% of your earnings. So 32 and a half times two gives you, or whatever, gives you your 65 and a half. So at 32 and a half years of service, you do not, you stop contributing to the plan. You're still a member of the plan. You're still eligible for a benefit when you do decide to retire. The town's contribution is what we call the actuarially determined contribution. I've made this, I refer to this several, often when we do the town budget, I always tell you when we go through the benefits, this is the amount that the town has to contribute. It's based on the annual valuation of the plan, and I'll get into that in a couple of minutes. So we have to make what we call the actuarially determined contribution to the plan. We budget for, the library also makes a contribution, and actually, some of our groups, like the WPCA, their employees, the WPCA makes a contribution for their employees, and the library makes a contribution for their employees, but the town makes the bulk of the contribution. The plan is actually partially closed. It was closed to town employees and to Board of Ed employees right now. Town employees were closed in 2010 and 2011. The Board employees were closed in 2019. The plan is still open, and still police members, fire members, and library, new employees can join the plan. So if you're hired as a police officer, you join the plan. If you're hired a firefighter, has the option of joining the plan or actually going into the defined contribution plan, or, and library employees have to join the library plan. The plan was closed around 2010 in that timeframe, because if you may recall, in 2009, basically the stock market tanked, the economy went into recession, we had a real difficult time. And a lot of the pension plans lost a lot of their assets, they lost a lot of their investments. Consequently, the liability for the plan grew dramatically. So us, the town of Farmington, along with other towns in the state of Connecticut and across the country, basically stopped making, stopped allowing people to join the plan at that point. They closed the plan to new participants and rolled everybody into what we call the defined contribution plan. The plans have, the thing you have to remember about these plans, they have a long-term outlook on them, so 30-year outlook on them. So eventually, whatever was lost in 2009 comes back. But at that time, the liability grew so significantly that most people, most towns closed their plans. And it was just a trend. Actually, if you remember the 90s, many corporations did the exact same thing. So we were late to the dance, if you will. We closed them like 10 to 20 years after most corporations had actually closed their plans. The new employees, anybody hired for the town after 2010, 2011, and for new Board of Ed employees after 2019, are now in the, what we call the defined contribution plan. This is your 401. We're actually a 401K. They join, they have, employees, it's mandatory, they have to join the plan, they have to contribute 6% of their base salary, not their total earnings, but their base salary to the plan, and the town matches that up to 6%. The employees direct their investments, they basically, as you would direct your 401, David direct their 401. We do provide a stable of investments to them to invest in. We hire a third party to actually be the custodian, to offer the investment opportunities, the different types of investments, and to do all the record-keeping for that. So the employees, then, they get to self-direct where they want their investments to go. The key point about this is, there's no guaranteed benefit. The only requirement that's similar to the defined benefit plan is that there is a vesting, a vesting period in the defined contribution plan. It's a five-year vesting. So in other words, anybody who joins the defined contribution plan, if they don't make five years, they could leave. They leave with their contributions into the 401. They do not get the town's contributions to the 401. They do get to take theirs. If they stay beyond five years and they leave in year six, or leave five years, one month, they are vested, considered vested, they do get the town's contributions also. But they need to make that five-year vesting. There's no partial vesting. It's a strict five-year cliff. So the town, other plans, the defined benefit plans, all have a vesting period also, ranging from five to 15 years. Just a little background on where we are with the plan, the defined benefit plan. Everything from this plan is the defined benefit plan. So as of October 1st, 2025, we've had 47 active employees, police employees in the plan. So, and again, this is all active employees currently working for the town, or not working for the town, but actively, not retired yet, but still in the plan. So we have 47 police employees, we have eight fire employees, we have eight firefighters, we have nine firefighters. One firefighter chose to go to the defined contribution plan. We have 24 town employees, 15 library employees, and 99 non-certified school employees. I highlighted the town employees that 24, give you an idea what happens with the closing of the plan. We have 170 employees in town. You subtract the 47, you subtract the eight, and from the police and fire, because they're part of the defined benefit plan. So the majority of town employees are not, are no longer in the defined contribution, in the defined benefit plan, they're in the defined contribution plan. Only 24 employees, people like, people in the Highway and Grounds Department, people, secretaries, all those people. So the majority of people now, in the past 15 years, we have swung from the defined benefit plan to the defined contribution plan. On the retirement side, what we call inactive participants or retirees, we have 321 retirees right now. We have spousal beneficiaries, we have 23, and we have 53 people who have vested in the plan, have left the town, and either have left their contributions with the intention of at some point, when they qualify, collecting a benefit. So we have 397, what we call inactive participants, who are entitled to a benefit, or are, who are receiving a benefit at this point. If you look at the ratios, you know, almost double the number of people who are retired than are actually active in the plan right now. One of the estimates is that by 2045, there will be no town employees left, active employees. All of the town employees will either, will be retired. So you'll have the police employees in the plan, presumably the still library employees and the fire employees, but there will be no active town employees left in the plan at that point. Switching gears a little bit, just talk about the Retirement Board. I know that every time the appointments come up in January, you'll fight not to get this appointment. Dave was the one who drew the short straw this last time around. Prior to that, it was Keith. For two terms?
Just one. Retirement Board's a good gig. It's not bad.
So.
Keep those meetings a good job. Go ahead.
The plan is governed by, it's governed by Chapter 51 of the Code of the Town of Farmington, so it's actually an ordinance, it's actually three ordinances, but we'll say it's one ordinance. The Farmington Retirement Board administers the plan, and in actuality, because the plan, the benefits are driven by bargaining unit contracts, there's not much the Board can do in terms of benefits, structure of benefits. So the Board really focuses on investments and on asset allocation, more with the financial well-being of the plan. There's 11 members on the Board. One member is Town Council, that's currently Dave. Each bargaining unit gets one representative. So there's five reps from the bargaining units, and the rest of the Board members are, five members are appointed by the Town Council. And actually, just kudos to you. I've been working with this Board for 20 years, and I've never had a bad Board. I mean, everybody that has been pointing to this Board has been very knowledgeable about investments, has been very, has been very cognizant of what their fiduciary responsibility is, and has worked diligently to keep the pension plan going and keep it viable. So kudos to all of you for the selections you've made to the Board. The, sorry, next slide. So the Board meets at least quarterly. Just a little sales pitch for any of you who come back and if you want to join the Board. We have the least meetings of anybody. Usually four meetings a year. The meetings are very dry. We review the performance, the investment performance, the plan. We, I don't, the Board does. The Board makes changes to investments as appropriate. They go to make changes from different asset classes or different investment types, or even within asset classes. They review the actual report, valuation report, which is, that's a real draw, you listen to an actuary speak for two hours. And then we have the asset allocation adjustments that are made based on what the valuation does. I'll get into a little bit of some of those terminology as we go along. The other parties to the plan, we have the Investment Advisor. And again, prior to 15 years ago, this was all, all these people I'm bringing up, other than the Board, were all done by the insurance companies. So now we have an independent Investment Advisor. Currently, our Investment Advisors, fiduciary advisors, they're out of, they're a national company, they have local offices in Windsor, Connecticut. They provide, they prepare, prepare and present quarterly reviews of investment performance. They come to the Board meetings, they hand out a 50-page document, and they go over three pages in the entire document, and then recycle everything else. They make recommendations for asset allocation changes, at least yearly. They, we have an investment policy that governs, governs our investments. The Board will make recommendation, changes to the policy based on recommendations from the Investment Advisor. And then the Board is compensated on hard dollars. And hard dollars, what we mean is, we do everything on a fee basis with the investment consultant. Always is possibility of conflict of interest with investment consultants, or the perception of conflict of interest with investment consultants. Because a lot of times, what they tell you to do, and you do it, and you make a trade, they can get some, in some arrangements, it's called soft arrangements, they could actually get compensation for that. So there's always concern that they could churn investments, for example. Because if they're getting a commission on the investments that they recommend and that the Board approves, and they're getting compensation on that, then they're going to, you know, potentially, I'm not saying they do, but potential, there's potential for churning, for example. So they're just going to turn over the portfolio as much as possible to benefit their fees and their. So the Board, back in 2010, made a conscious effort to, or determined effort to have a hard-dollar fee. We've been paying fiduciary about $52,000 a year for their investment services. We've been paying them that since 2013. So they've been pretty steady with us. They have not pressured us for a fee increase or anything like that. They, and their service level, you know, they're very good. And they're also predominant, one of the predominant Investment Advisors in the state of Connecticut for municipal plans that have left. The other party to the plan is the Plan Actuary. And if you like numbers, you should, this is your person. The actuary, basically, we feed the actuary, it's like feeding a computer. You feed the actuary all of the information about the plan, everything that took place in the past year in the plan. They digest it, they analyze it, they do all types of forecasting, they look at, and they come up with what we call a report card or valuation. They basically tell you, this is what your plan is worth, this is what your, the direction your plan is going in, this is what your return was, any type of information, statistical information about your plan. And the big thing they do is they tell you, or they tell us, how much we have to contribute to keep the plan solid or on a strong financial footing. So this is what, again, when I would come to you, and I guess in March, and say, you know, the plan, the contribution is going to be $5.8 million this year, because the valuation report said it has to be $5.8 million. They determine what the assets are, they determine, more importantly, what the liabilities are, the plan's liabilities are, and what the long-term liabilities are, and then they come up with the actuarially determined contribution. They do other things with the plan. The valuation tells you a lot of other things, too, that are important about the plan, statistically and the long-range forecasting, where the plan's going. They tell you if your asset allocation is good. We do the asset allocation, we have our targets of where we want to put funds, but they'll tell you, yeah, what you're doing is right, you know, what you're doing is wrong, you need to, you need to shift focus in certain ways. We use what we call an assumed rate of return. Everybody has a, it's our goal, the goal of our asset allocation, of our investment portfolio, is to earn 6.58% interest a year. Doesn't sound like a lot in these days, when the stock market's going crazy, you know, 20, 30%. But again, we don't throw everything into the stock market, as I'll show you in a couple of minutes, but, so we have to make, try to make sure that what we do invest in generates at least 6.58% a year, on average. Some years you make it, some years you don't. Realistically, they'll tell us if that, if our asset allocation will actually earn 6.58% a year. They'll tell us if that's realistic, based on what we're doing or not, which is another key component of what they do. For '25, '26, if you go back one minute, the total contribution was $6.3 million. So the town, the WPCA, the library, all contributed, in total, $6.3 million to the plan to keep it solid for this next year. The final, the third component of the plan is what we call our Plan Custodian. And the Plan Custodian is basically the record-keeper of the plan. They keep track of all the plan investments, they price the investments on a monthly basis for us, independently of the investment managers, to make sure that the investment managers are correct. They do all the trades. Anytime the Board determines they want to make a trade, they, we use the Plan Consultant to make the trades. Trades are directed by the Board, through me, as the fiduciary of the plan, through the trustee of the plan, which is the Plan Custodian, to, and they make the trades. So it's a multi-layered process that we have to go through to make trades, but they actually make the trades. They issue monthly and periodic benefit payments, so anybody who's retired, you get a payment, you get a payment, it doesn't come from us, and this is always the thing we always remind people. We hired a Plan Custodian to actually cut the checks, or to make the payments to the retirees each month, and to do all the record-keeping for them. So when they get their 1099Rs at the end of the year, it comes from the Plan Custodian. When they get any type of information on the pension plan, it goes, it comes from the Plan Custodian. We pay them to do that. They, again, because they share fiduciary and trustee responsibility for the plan, so they get to do that. They, they're paid to do that. And one of the, you know, one of the things, we always tell, when somebody comes in and retires, they hand in their paperwork, tell them, listen, you're never going to get any more paperwork from the town again. Anything you get retired regarding your pension's going to come from the Plan Custodian, which in this case is Principal Custody Solutions. So, and we, so I always say, never ever throw anything out that you get from PCS. So of course, on April 13th, somebody will call up and say, and again, my 1099R. Say, well, did you get something in the mail from PCS? Probably, probably threw it up. You know, junk mail. So threw it out. So it's, if you know of anybody who's retired, make sure, remind them, don't throw out anything you get from PCS if you get a town pension. This Plan Custodian is actually compensated through soft dollars, and we do that because it's kind of, it's partially soft dollars. They get paid for the trades they make. But again, the trades they are making are directed by us. They can't make a trade without us approving, directing them to make the trade. So there's, the likelihood of churning isn't there. Two, they have to make the trade when we direct the trade to be made. So if I send them notice to make a trade, to sell X number of shares of this mutual fund, they have to make it within a certain time period. They can't wait to make it. They have to make, so if I tell them today to do it, they would have to make it by Friday. They couldn't, they couldn't wait to a more advantageous time or a worse time to do it. They have to do it within a certain time period under the contract. So they do get trade, dollars for the trades that are made, and they do get a fee for all the checks they issue, for all the documents they, they produce. Right now, they're averaging about $3,700 a month in trade, in compensation from the town. So it's not, it's about $44,000 a year that they're receiving from the town. It's looking at what other custodians are going, are going for, what they're charging. We're pretty much in the ballpark. We're probably middle of the pack when it comes to fees with our Plan Custodians. Over the, this sounds kind of terrible, but it's not, it's meant to be positive, even though it doesn't sound. Over the last 10 years, the Retirement Board has made a lot of changes to the plan. They've made a lot of decisions that actually negative, they're negative in the short term, okay? They've made a lot of the right decisions, but when you, when I come to you with the, and say, you know, we're increasing the contribution next year because of this, because of that, these are decisions that were made by the Retirement Board that, again, in the short term are causing the contribution to go up, but in the long term, benefit the plan and are doing the right thing by the plan, by making the plan solid in the, for the long term. Give you an example, to gradually reduce the assumed rate of return on investments, as I mentioned, this is the target rate. This is what, the rate that we want to earn on the investments in the plan. And when a lot of these plans were started back in the 60s and some in the 70s, one of the things was, you know, that I guess some professor or something at some point over that time period said, you know, the stock market makes 8.5% a year over 100 years, so you should use 8.5% as your, as your bogey. So, you know, all these municipal plans, government plans, all started using, you know, 8.5%, 10% as their bogey. And that's all well and fine, because the higher the assumed rate of return is, that means the more, and again, on an assumption basis, the more money you're going to generate from your investment. You know, you make more money on an 8% investment than you do on a 6% investment. So the higher you assume the investment returns are going to be, the less you have to contribute to the plan. Realistically, since 2009, that hasn't been happening. The bogeys has actually gotten a lot lower. So there's been a campaign by a lot of plans to reduce that number from 8.5 down to the 6, 6 and 5% range, a more, more realistic range for the, what's been happening the past 20 years or so. Our Pension Board, your Retirement Board, has actually taken the approach that it should reduce gradually, not to do it dramatically, but to do it gradually. And that's what they, they did. And the goal actually was to go to 6%, but because the market has turned around over the past few years, and because the returns have been getting, we've been actually hitting the bogey, the 6, or exceeding the 6.625%, we decided to leave it at the 6.625 for the time being. We may, we may have to revisit it in the future, but right now, the asset allocation forecast from the actuary and the actual, what's actually happening with the plan shows that a 6.625 is a good place to be at this point in time. Another thing that the Pension Board did, and this, this one I give them a lot of credit for, because not a lot of towns are doing this or willing to do this, but everybody was using mortality tables from the 60s and 70s. And back in 2010, the Actuarial Society came up with these new mortality tables, and they, what was different about the new ones was, obviously, they reflected that people are living longer, but they actually separated out public employees from other employees, because for some reason, public employees live differently, or live longer or live shorter than other employees. But they did specifically for public safety employees, police and fire, and for government employees in general. So they came out with these mortality tables, and basically, as you would have guessed, they said that we're living a lot longer, so we should make the mortality tables should reflect that. So mortality tables are factored into the liability of the plan, which means that if you say somebody's going to live longer, the liability in the plan is greater, and if the liability in the plan is greater, your contribution is greater. So a lot of towns have avoided actually implementing these mortality tables. The Retirement Board actually did implement them, and actually, I think it was on your watch, as I may recall.
Yeah.
You know?
No, I do.
But they, they actually did that, and it negatively impacted the plan. But again, in the long term, it's, it's like, you know, you're budgeting more correctly for what, for the long term, and that's, that's key to the plan, because the plan has a long-term approach. And then, lastly, the. And then lastly, the, recently, the plan, or the, I'm sorry, retirement board asked the actuary to look at the assumptions, the plan assumptions, and make sure that the assumptions that they're using in the actuarial report were accurate. And these are assumptions like salary increases, what earnings look like. You know, we're assuming 3% salary increases and they're getting 6%. That's, you know, we're assuming five retirees are going to die each year and you're getting two retirees dying each year. All these things impact liability, impact the funding status of the plan and eventually what the contribution to the plan is and the financial stability of the plan. So an assumption study was done. It showed that we were, had some assumptions that could be adjusted or should be adjusted. And the board voted to do that recently. So again, these are all things that, in the short term, reflect negatively on the plan in the evaluation report. But over the long term, are really going to help benefit the plan and keep it on a solid footing. Just briefly, in planned assets, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about in terms of how, what we have for assets. I'm sorry, just looking for some. So as of October 15th of this year, we had 116 million, 116.8 million dollars in assets. Cash, we have $2.2 million. Mutual funds, we have $109 million. In real estate, we have $5.5 million. That's our asset, that's a broad view of our asset allocation mix at this point in time. Okay, the asset allocation plan, I think I mentioned it's based on the annual evaluation. Can you, can you skip to the next one? Yeah, okay. This, this is our target asset allocation plan. Right now, the target or the asset allocation says that we should have 0% in cash. We actually have 2%. Fixed income says we should have 39.3%. We have 39.2. Domestic equity, 37. We have 37. International equity, 16, a little bit over. And then real estate, 7%. We're at 5.1. There's a, there's a range which is acceptable. So if we say we're going to be at the target of 39 and we're at 42, we're fine with that. If we're at 39 and we're at 34, we're fine with that. Anything you get beyond that, we would, what we would do is rebalance the plan. We would take from wherever the plan has, wherever the plan exceeds the target allocation, we would take from that and put it into wherever the plan under exceeds the target, is below the target allocation. So periodically, we do rebalance the plan. We move investments around so that we stay within the tolerance of those, of that target allocation. And it's key for us is the target allocation. Again, it raises the money that we need to fund both to keep the plan solid, keep growing the plan assets so that as the plan assets grow, let's, the plan stays solid and the contribution stays lower, or stays lower. So go to the next. As I mentioned, the rebalance on the cash, the asset allocation is at zero. We keep it around 2%. We run about 800, actually close to $900,000 in benefit payments a month. So we need to have cash each month to do that. So we usually keep about three months' worth of roughly two and a half to three months' worth of cash on hand, of benefit payment cash on hand. So that's why you see, you know, that 2% there. The underweighing, weighing in the real estate that you saw, that's primarily due to the board recently made the decision to get out the real estate. Real estate is a semi-liquid or illiquid investment. And the board didn't feel comfortable with that. They felt that we should move it, move the money into the other asset classes. Real estate is really what, is really a balance account. It's, it acts as an equity, but it also acts as a fixed income. And it gives you dividends through rents and, but it also gives you gains through the sale of property. So there's, it's a mixed bag. It's like, it's, you know, it's like a, it's a little bit of everything. But the one thing it is, is it's not really liquid. And so the board felt, especially with the way the markets, the real estate market's been going, the commercial real estate market has been going in the past, since, past five years since COVID, that it was time to really lower our exposure to that. So we've been lowering our exposure. The way you lower exposure, you put in a redemption, redemption queue and you wait. So we have $5 million. We'll probably get that $5 million over the course of the next five to six years. We're not going to get it all at once. It's not like when you sell a mutual fund or, or you turn in a CD. It's, it's more of the idea that as they sell properties, you get, you get a portion of the sale proceeds, of the profit of the sale proceeds. The problem is, you're part of a writ with, with thousands of other investors who also have, have redemptions, redemptions in the queue. So, so you get part of that profit, but you get it based on where you are in the queue and based on what percentage you are of the total investment redemption pool. So, so probably, there was some hope that maybe over the next two years, we could fully redeem out the $5 million. It's more likely we redeem out over five years. Key point here, too, also, is the plan does not contain any alternative, alternative investments. We're not into anything that's crazy. There's no hedge funds. There's, there's nothing, let's put it this way, if, there's nothing that we don't understand in the fund. All the investments are things, they're pretty much plain vanilla. There's things that we would, we would, you know, invest in based on a prudent person principle. You know, you're investing for, you're investing for somebody else's fiduciary. So you're not going to put at risk the assets of the fund, the investments in the fund. And a couple of things about the fund, I wrote up there, but I just want to make sure I hit them before I. As I mentioned, the plan is considered mature. Okay? The plan has, the average retiree's age is 71.6. The average age of the active participants is 48.3. Yeah, that's, the active participants are the people working for the town right now who are in the plan. So think of all the people we've hired over the past, I mean, I think probably 70% of the highway and grounds department is under the age of 40. So, you know, police officers usually retire between 48 and 50. So the average participant right now is 48 in that plan. Of course, I probably skew that because I'm well over 48 and I'm in the plan. So I probably skew that a lot. The average spousal benefit is 71.5, which ties back to the average age of the retiree. And the average credited service in the plan is 14 years. So it, which is interesting and it's somewhat skewed by Board of Ed and non-certified employees. But the average person right now in the plan only has 14 years of credited service. So we do have some people that are beyond the 32.5. But for the most part, that 197 people that I mentioned, or their average length of service in the plan has only been 14 years. So it's not like, there's a lot of long-time people in the plan. You know, they, and most of those people will probably retire between 22 and 24 years of service. If, you know, so it's not a, so, and this gives you some, I don't have these up there, but just give you an idea of some of the makeup on the, on the, actually, this is retired participants. We have, these are people collecting benefits. We have five under the age of 50. We have 35 between the age of 50 and 59. We have 115 between the ages 60 and 69. We have 117 between 70 and 79. We have 62 between 80, 80 and 89. And we have 10 over the age of 90. And according to one statistic, and I don't think this is true, we have one over the age of 100. So I don't think that's true, but I have to, I have to check the file on that one. So, so again, the plan is a mature plan. Because the plan is a mature plan and because it's partially closed, what you're going to see, and we are seeing, and you're going to see over time is that employee contributions as a percentage of total contributions is declining. There was one time when the plan was collecting about $2 million in employee contributions. This past year, that number was $900,000. So again, as less employees go into the plan, its participation decreases back to employees. There's just going to be less employee contributions. So what that means is that the employer's share of contributions will increase. Okay? And also, payments to retirees will gradually increase. One statistic I was looking at shows that, the good news is that the contributions will probably increase until the year 20, 2042. And after 2042, your contributions to the plan will stop totally. So it's going to be, you guys should run for council in 2042 or come back and run for council in 2042. Because basically, what the forecast shows right now is that in 2041, the contribution to the plan will be $10.3 million. It shows that in 2042, the contribution to the plan will be zero. So that's the way the forecast works right now between the assets, the liabilities, and the return on investments. So whether that happens or not, you know, that's the actuarial, the actuarial forecast shows that. And some of the other forecasts that we've done show that that will occur. So basically, this plan is built for the long term. It's built for, it's, you know, everything's forecasted, it's for the long term. Everything has always been looked at as a 30-year outlook on the plan. And that's, that's the goal of the plan. Meantime, over time, we are going to see a more conservative approach to investment and investing in the plan. Right now, that, that asset mix you saw, if I were to come back five years from now, you'd probably see more weighted towards the fixed income side as opposed to the equity side. So you're going to see, you'll see shifting over time in that area. But you're also going to, like I said, you're going to see increases in the town contribution over the next, you know, 10, 15 years. That's going to continue, and you're going to see that growth in the, in the payments. But overall, the plan's, it's very well managed. The retirement board is doing a very good job. And what was put in place 15 years ago is really working out well for the plan.
Thank you, Joe. So I'm going to see an increase to my benefits soon?
Actually, I did not make that point. I probably should make that point. Two things about this plan very quickly. This plan does not have a beneficiary, survivorship beneficiary aspect to it. We do have spousal beneficiaries, but that's a voluntary option for the retiree. The retiree can actually choose to reduce their benefit at retirement time in order to provide for a spousal benefit should they pre-decease their spouse. The other thing this plan does not have is a colon. Once you, whatever your benefit is the day you retire, that's your benefit. It's fixed for the rest of your life. It does not change.
Sort of.
So you're not, yes.
I was sort of hoping for something.
No.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Brian?
Yeah, one. Thank you for all the information. It's the first time I've seen this, in this depth of information, so thank you. I'm curious to know if the plan is to have the fund kind of be self-funding when we hit that point where it's going to be zero contributions. What's the plan there?
So when the plan had zero contributions, the idea is you'll still get the employee contributions. The town won't have to make a contribution.
The town will be making the contribution.
The town will not make a contribution. The employees will still make a contribution. Whatever employees are still left in the plan will make a contribution. And at that point, it's really, the goal would be to manage the assets in the plan to make sure that they're generating enough income to pay the benefits, to keep the plan, you know, 100% funded. So at that point, it becomes, again, a more conservative approach, but an approach that guarantee, doesn't, you can't guarantee, but approach that makes sure that you are getting sufficient return on your investments so that you can meet your obligations.
Okay, TBD in 20 years.
Patty?
Thank you. This is very informative and a lot of information, which I appreciate and still absorbing. You said that contributions, I understand that contributions are increasing, makes sense on the town side. 2041, you said about 10.3 million. Are we looking at a gradual increase from about 6 to 10.3 or is that?
It'll be a gradual increase. You're probably going to see contribute, again, a lot of this will depend on how the stock market does and how the investments perform over time. But you will see, and if there's any changes in assumptions or changes in benefits. Now, this assumes, again, everything's based on assumptions. So basically, what this is saying is that some assumptions are, based on the current list of assumptions that we have, you'll see gradual increases to the contribution. You're at 6.3 right now and you're going to go to 10.3 in, you know, by, what, in the next 20 years? So it's, or 18 years. So you're, it's, but it'll be a gradual. It's not going to be, we're going to go from 6.3 to 10, you know, in a couple of years. It's going to be over the next 18 years, you'll get to that point. And then you'll, and then you'll, but, but after that point, that next drop-off is significant and dramatic. It's like, you know, that will be a, just a drop. You're not going to see a gradual down decrease of the contribution. You're just going to see a drop of the contribution.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Well, that was a great presentation. I don't have any questions.
All right, the former chair, Keith.
Thank you, Joe. So I was going to say, to your point about the members of the committee, when I was appointed to that, Joan Valenti tracked me down to give me a dissertation. She cares a lot about that board and puts a lot of time into it. So, and there are like incredibly competent, skilled professionals on that board guiding it. So, and she really took time, answered questions for me, so the people that really care. I had one question on, so I think a lot of towns are, most towns are keeping their emergency service people, right, on the pension. That's like what we're doing with police and fire. But we also, it's still open for the library, right? And so I remember you saying, is there, is there like a threshold of how many, how many hours per week you need to be on to be a member? Is it, is it full-time work? Is that what it needs to be?
Yeah, there, in order to be a participant, you have to be basically a full-time employee.
And that's 30 hours or?
For some people, it's 30 hours. For some people, it's 35 hours. And for some people, it's 37 hours. And some people, it's 40 hours.
Okay.
So it's, it really depends on what your status is. The people at the 30 hours are predominantly the Board of Ed non-certified employees. Because, because most of them are 10-month employees, a lot of them don't work in the summer. So when you average out there, the time they do work and the time they don't work, you want, they have to get to 30 hours. So they basically need to get at least 30 hours, or they have to exceed 30 hours from September to June in order to make up to get to 30 hours for the summer.
And how's the decision get made that library stays in, town employees come out? Or is that just, just happened that way or?
Library, the library is kind of a unique animal. The library is not a town department. It's, it's its own entity.
No, I, yeah.
And they actually were late to the party when it came to the pension. The pension was established for the town, as far as I can tell, I think it was in the 60s. And the library came in much later than that. And apparently, at some point, probably the FB, whatever.
FGLA?
Yeah. Came to the town and asked for a pension plan. So the town passed an ordinance setting up the pension plan for the library employees. They modeled it somewhat on the town plan, but not totally on the town plan. So it, most of it is the town plan. Benefit structure-wise, it's the town plan. The hour requirements are a little different. And there's a couple of, they're more of an ERISA plan. We're not an ERISA plan. They're more of an ERISA plan. So a lot of their stuff was determined by, by ERISA.
Okay, yeah, because there's a couple of things on the library side where I know like the Board of Ed had switched over to like a health savings plan type thing for a lot of their things. But I think a lot of the library is still on a more traditional insurance plan, too, right?
No, actually, that was, that was true until this past year.
Good, okay. Because that was something we had talked about when I was on that board two years ago.
Yeah, that was, that was a big thing. And there's a lot of, I shouldn't say this, there was a lot of resistance to that.
I remember those discussions at that board, but I think.
Right now, the majority, I think the overwhelming, if not all, of the benefit of library employees are on the health savings or have dropped off insurance totally.
Yeah.
Like they've, they've switched to their spouse's plan.
Yeah.
So, so yeah, there's, there was a big migration over.
Okay, cool. I think that was the only ones I had. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, Joe.
Amy?
Thank you. This is interesting. One question I had was, does the town match all the different percentages? And you said.
We don't match the percentages on the defined benefit plan. We do the actuarially determined contribution. And that's not allocated to each individual employee. It's the other thing about the defined benefit plan. Many times you get an employee will say, well, what's my balance in the defined, what's my balance in the pension plan? They don't have an individual balance. What they have is what they, what we call an earned benefit. So every year that you're here after you're vested, you, you've earned a benefit. And we do, we don't do it for everybody, well, the actuary does it for everybody. we do, we don't do it for everybody. Well, the actuary does it for everybody. They determine at a certain point in time, this is what you've earned in benefits based on your earnings so far with the town, based on your years of service with the town. So they'll say, and you'll get a benefit statement from us, and it'll say, okay, as of July 1 of 2025, you've been with the town 10 years. Your average earnings were $30,000. Your earned benefit is, you know, $2,000 a year. So that's what the employee gets. The contribution that the town makes to the plan goes into the overall plan, and it covers all of the different groups in the plan, and it covers everybody. So it's not allocated out to each individual employee. It's allocated to the entire group.
Okay, thank you.
And our current chair, Dave.
Yeah, I think Joe did a great job. I mean, you know, sat with Joe last week to kind of talk it through. And I think he, you know, I think he did a great job as far as really explaining, you know, the nuts and bolts of, you know, the plan. I think what's really interesting is, you know, that decision a number of years back now to, to basically close this plan, I think is, 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 was, was a fine decision, except now this plan being mature and partially closed, has a real responsibility 15 years in from that decision, to make sure we guide this thing to the point where you can see that one slide where there's all these, you know, there's retirees now. There's only 24 town people that are actually contributing to this plan. Right? So that number probably 15 years ago was probably, there was probably 100 and, 125 people contributing to the plan. You know what I mean? So, so this thing is winding down, but your, your responsibility beyond that is a number of years out. And I think, and I think, I think Joe did a, a great explanation of that. Because I think that's really going to be incumbent upon any council here to make sure that they understand what the actuarially defined contribution is in a given year. You know, so it's not like you can pick up all these new employees and somehow magically start contributions over again. That, that ship has sailed. So I think, I think, and I think we hit that note ahead to really explain to Joe.
Excellent. Anybody else for a follow-up question? Everybody good?
All right. Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it. Glad to say I'm below the average age of the retirees too.
Should we draw the motion?
Yes.
So please withdraw, withdraw the motion because nothing to vote on.
I withdraw my motion for the presentation from the retirement board.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We have no new business. We have no executive session. We'll call for adjournment, please.
Make a motion to adjourn the October 28th town council meeting.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you.